Hello, it's Dennis again here with Park Bench and Rain City Diggs. And I'm here with Kenmore Council Candidate Van Sperry. And we're gonna have a chat again today. I'd like to introduce you to Van and what he is looking to accomplish. Uh, should he gain the vote?
Yeah, certainly. Anyway, I'm Van Sperry. And I'm running for uh, City Council's position number seven here in Kenmore. I came to Kenmore when I was six years old, brought your family, my father. Um, needed a place where he could build a kiln and keep a five hundred gallon propane tank. Uh, which, city of Seattle, Seattle didn't really allow him to do that, you know, it was a little dangerous. So we ended up out here, bought a little Rambler for twelve thousand five hundred dollars, it was on three quarters of an acre, it was back in fifty-six. And it was basically quite a, it was a great time to grow up in that area.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it, it was very rural at that time. Um, it was just a. Uh, prior to Arrowhead Elementary being built.
Oh, wow.
And uh, so I spent first grade in Kenmore Elementary, which is just about.
You could throw a rock from here.
You could throw a rock from here, well, I used to.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was, yeah, it was very rural. We stood, my father used to take me for long walks, we'd go out for miles and. Yeah, walk, see the frogs, the toads and all kinds of creatures, it was great.
Yeah. Now, you said your dad was building a kiln. We were talking earlier, Van was telling me that his dad, was he actually a professor at the UW?
He is, was a professor at the University of Washington, he taught pottery. Um, yeah, he started out, uh, he went, originally he was. Gonna go into farming, he grew up in Saskatchewan, um, on a farm. So he just was gonna sign up for agriculture, but the line for art was shorter, so he. He wasn't a big one on patience, so he signed up for that. Ended up going to Chicago Art Institute and uh, came, uh, so we lived in Chicago, my wife spent my. From six months on to about three, lived in Chicago in the housing projects, very interesting place.
Yeah.
Um, my mother wasn't real fond of it, but it was, it was okay. So we came out to Seattle here in fifty, must've been fifty-four. Um, and my father got his masters at the University of Washington. And he got a job teaching there and worked his way up. Um, so I grew up here, I grew up in Kenmore, went through Arrowhead Elementary. Um, Kenmore Junior High and Englemore High School. That's the first graduating class, you know, from all the way from sophomore to senior and, and graduate.
Oh, that's, that's a great little piece of history.
Yeah, yeah.
You got some deep roots then.
Oh, yeah, deep roots, I feel a little old sometimes, but they're good and deep.
Yeah. So, so how does that, um, how does that history, uh, in, I guess, what does that, um. Inform as far as the things that you would like to do in the position that you are a candidate for?
Right, um. Uh, well, let's start up with my schooling anyway, I graduated to, to, got a Bachelor of Science in Human Biology. I got my Masters in Public Policy. Anyway, I always had a fondness for this area, came back here. Uh, after my schooling, I was in Wichita for a little while. Um, lived in Seattle for quite a, quite a bit of my adult, young adult years. Uh, came back to Kenmore in nineteen ninety-one, bought this house at that time. Uh, with my wife and our kids grew up here. And I've always had a real strong feeling, always been drawn back to Kenmore.
Yeah, yeah.
Doing Kenmore and Wichita, it's kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
I liked Wichita, Wichita was cool, you know, it's, you could ride your bike and people would throw beer balls at you and.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, it was a real cat and mouse place, it was, it was very interesting.
A little rough and tumble there?
It was, yeah, you could err out the back of the, like, they couldn't sell, they couldn't sell hard liquor except in these kind of liquor clubs that you had to belong to. Uh, kind of a bar. They're all these cinder block, basically square, cinder, but regular cinder block buildings with. Blackened windows and uh, back alley for the fights and. It was something.
That's a, that's a rough hood.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I guess I won't talk about the worst.
Yeah.
But, um.
Um, so, so you've been here actually as a resident, again, since ninety-one?
Correct.
Um, and I know you've had involvement in kind of local, um, activities for a good portion of that time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why don't you talk a little bit about what you, some of the projects you've been involved in?
Well, a lot of it has been, uh, with my wife, she actually was on City Council for twelve years. Uh, went through for three terms, um, we were involved quite a bit with the, um. Let's say founding with the incorporation of the city in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
Um, there was a big push-on at that time for King County. They wanted to push all the gambling, uh, gambling places and topless, uh.
Right.
Places out here, we didn't think that was appropriate. Um, so that actually was one of the founding issues, one of the pressing issues of, uh, the incorporation of Kenmore. Um, and so it formed, formed a city, we had a big, we had a vote on gambling. Uh, but it, you know. Can't remember exactly, but it was a convincing no, that residents didn't want that kind of, you know, they saw shoreline and. Um, all the problems that that brought, et cetera, so.
Right.
Uh, took control of our destiny and, and moved on at that time. Um. So then, uh, yeah, my wife was involved with, with a number of, um. Different projects, she was, had a great deal to do with the new city hall and.
Oh, wow.
Uh, they built that, they saved a good portion of, I don't know how many millions of dollars, but they, they did save a lot of money. And that was, uh, foresight of, uh, they purchased the land and it just turned out to be good, turned out to be good.
That's a beautiful facility.
It is, it's very nice, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a gold, it's got a gold environmental.
The lead, gold lead?
Yeah, so, gold and then platinum is the highest.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a great building and then they, uh, were insightful, they, they purchased a lot of the land. Um, and then sold it to the developers where you see all the development now down.
Yeah.
On the central core, so.
Yeah, Kenmore's been hopping here lately.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a great little place, just because of the location, we're close to Seattle where you can go around east side, you can rent the lake, so. Um.
One of the last best places you can live and get across the lake without a bridge.
I think so, yeah, it really is, um, it really is.
Yeah.
So, my involvement, I've always been interested in politics, that's the masters in public policy. Um. And I just felt this was the right time, you know, my, my wife was, I think she quit two years ago. Uh, I think it was two thousand sixteen maybe, yeah, sounds right. Um, so, the opportunity opened up, I couldn't let the, you know, just open spot, somebody just to walk in, there had to be some competition, so.
You bet.
And I, I, and I stepped up and, uh, I've, um, I'm excited about it, I'm enjoying the process.
Nice.
And I'll enjoy it, and I, yeah, I really will enjoy it if I get elected, so whoever you are, vote for me.
Um, what are you seeing as the kind of critical issues that are currently facing Kenmore that you're hoping to address?
Right, right. Um, well, we have, we're, we're starting to have a parking problem. Um, which goes back to, to the contracting with, uh, the developers. Um, like, we exchanged, uh, parking, city parking for. Uh, some affordable housing units and we are, parking is tough, there's a lot of on-street parking. A lot of, uh, a lot of, um, several intersections which, um, often are, can be quite blind and quite difficult. Without a light.
Yeah.
So, that in a, in one sense is, is a problem, again, the city is doing a good job, I think, in getting the sidewalks. Uh, redoing the traffic patterns on, on sixty-eighth and Monique Drive and on Bothaway. Uh, really lowered the accident, uh, accident rate when they put in the meridians, so people had to make U-turns. Instead of left turns, uh, the left turn was very hazardous.
You bet.
So that's been good. I think one of the more pressing issues is coming about in, you know, twenty or twenty, twenty-one. Um, the budget, right now the budget's in the black, but it's kind of heading towards that cross line. Where we may get into the red, and so we have to really make some tough choices and identify our priorities. Um, because once, once you start getting into that red, that red zone. Um, it's, it's just like the, uh, quicksand, the Tarzan movies.
Yeah.
You just get sucked right in.
Yeah.
So we have to, there's, there's a real need, that's gonna be a real issue, keeping out of debt. And, um, so, we just have to identify our priorities and, and stick with those, so.
So, as far as, as keeping out of debt, what do you see are some of the options for us for, uh, for helping to make that happen?
Well, I don't like taxes. Um, obviously some kind of business revenue, um. Increase in sales tax would be ideal.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of it, I think, can, can be. Um, just, yeah, we'll have to look at grants, a lot of federal grants that may be available. Um, we have a lot of expenditure, we have to redo the bridge. So the southbound lanes on the bridge are gonna be redone, they were built in nineteen thirties. Um, the northbound were built in nineteen seventies, so we don't really have to do anything on that. Um. So i- it's gonna be a difficult issue, I don't think anybody has really quite the answer for it right now.
Yeah.
We just can have to look and see what we can do.
Yeah.
There may have to be a combination of tax, you know, of tax increase. Where, I don't know exactly, certainly property taxes are, are horrendous and I think stretch the limit. The Kenmore can only raise, um, their portion of the property tax, one percent a year. Um, and for a long time they did not do that, um, because there wasn't really, there wasn't a need for it. Um, at that time, but, um. That's gonna be hard to say, I, you know, I can't say I have the answers, you know, about that, I just, you know.
Got some hard questions to hear.
Yeah, we're gonna have to learn, I think we, we need to just, you know, find out what the best practices are. And I think if we can look for cities that are similar to us, we have, um. Like, the Lake Point development is problematic, that's fifty acres. Uh, gone through three developers that, uh, finally end up dropping out.
Right.
Um, now they're exploring a few different options, uh, one of which I think may be effective of breaking it down into like ten acre.
The parcels that they.
Development, yeah, ten acre parcel, so no one developer has, has to take that big risk of, of. Fifty acres, that's, that's a lot of development, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's problematic being built on the, uh, little garbage dump and.
Right, yeah, all that fill.
The sediment and the fill from the bridge, the five-twenty, five-twenty bridge, so. So Lake Point is gonna be a really interesting challenge, but I think. Try to look maybe at what other cities that have kind of a similar issue may have done.
Right.
Um, and especially if we can develop some. I'd identify and then kind of develop a little bit of association with those cities and maybe get enough oomph where we can approach the federal government. Um.
Get some help there.
Group and perhaps find some solutions to, uh, yeah, to Lake Point developments, but.
Right.
It's got so much potential, um, some people are concerned with the, the pollution from the cement factory. Um. I mean, I agree that has to be looked at, I'm not sure where that stands, how, how big of an issue that really is.
Yeah, yeah, hard to say, like, I haven't seen the data or reports on that myself, so I, I would be interested to see what that, what the recommendations are.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so now, are you retired now, is that correct?
I am, yes, I was a nurse actually at Seattle Children's for, well, as a nurse, as an RN for about twenty-five years. And then a total of about thirty-five years at Seattle Children's, I left at the end of two thousand thirteen.
Ah, okay.
Kind of retired and moved on.
Yeah.
That feels good, it still, it still kind of stuns me, I'm like, I don't have to go to work.
Yeah, that's gotta be a little bit of a, uh, a shocking realization.
It is, it is, it really is, um. God bless Social Security. Yeah.
Wow, so, so you grew up in Kenmore, you've spent, uh, your, the majority of your career working in healthcare and with childrens.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you're retired in the community and now it sounds like kind of looking for an opportunity to, to step in and, and do something to, to, uh. Be of service to the community, so.
Yeah, sure, yeah, definitely, I, I, um, you know, it really is an act of service, the pay isn't, isn't significant. Um, but there are, I think, gonna be some real challenges coming up, and I, I'm looking forward, it's, it's gonna give me an opportunity to, to learn new things, you know. Get in contact, make network out a little bit, uh, looking forward to. Having kind of a, a structured work situation, I definitely, uh, uh, look forward to the challenge. The, the, the policy is gonna bring, uh, it's, as the city gets bigger, it's gonna get harder to, to make good decisions.
Right.
And why, you know, wise spending, wise planning. And especially with the urban, urban growth management, uh, requirements, um. It's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be a lot of pressure from above and, and I think it's very important for city politics to remain non-partisan. Because I don't believe city council should be a vehicle for. An agenda that, that may come from Olympia or an agenda that may come from, uh, outside organizations. We really need to stay focused on what is good for the city, we need to stay focused on being a voice.
Yeah.
For the people, uh, having an ear to listen to the people. And not be driven by agendas either on the right or on the left, uh, of a partisan nature. Because they, most likely will not be in our best interest.
Yeah.
Um.
That, that actually brings up a great, um, question, I, just, one of the things that has been kind of a lot of conversation around here recently is the sound transit. And, you know, the impact of some of the businesses along Kenmore Way.
Correct, correct, um, yeah, there, the, um, what are the transit oriented development, I could just, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, um. I hate to say this, but I don't have a lot of faith in, in Metro.
Yeah.
Uh, in Sound Transit, they have, uh, uh, kind of this philosophy, if you. You know, get the bus to the bus stop, people are gonna ride the bus, but I'm not sure how good of a. Theology that is or a philosophy, so. We'll just have to see, but, but a lot of the development, it needs to be oriented, uh. On and around, on that strip, um, the five-twenty-two.
Right.
And. So, we'll see, I, I personally would like to see more, of course we have the, um. Uh, business tech incubator here in Kenmore. Um, I, I personally would like to see some more corporate involvement, uh, in our city. Um, I don't think, you know, we don't need to go hog wild like Bellevue, but I think, you know. There are some areas here that we could develop, and if we could get some corporate business, uh, tax and.
Yeah.
And that sort of thing, knowing we may, we may be able to, to solve, you know, bring in a little bit more income.
Yeah, uh, do you know, or do you have any, um, thoughts on good candidates for those conversations? Any, uh, you know, if there's anybody that's been expressing an interest about that?
Um, no, not right offhand, um, I think we really need to look at some of the banks, maybe establishing some corporate headquarters here. And we got some areas where we could have some very nice development in that area, not making it too extreme.
Yeah.
But same time maybe bringing, you know, making use of. Um, making use of every acre that we got, the whole idea about strong towns of, you know, that. Empty concrete is losing money, um. Uh, is, is true and, you know, we have to make every square foot counts, count as far as when it comes to business and.
Right. Um, so, now, there's also been some conversation around parks in the area and.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, doing kind of more, going back to Lake Point, maybe the, the conversation around utilizing the waterfront and how best to, to. You know, get the public access to it as well as, you know, making it useful and, and, um, attractive for business to be there.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I think there's a, there's a buffer zone where, um, it need, where they can't build and which can be open. To the public as far as being along the waterfront.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have to look at that, I. I, you know, I do think that there is some possibility of maybe making. Um, some, well, I'm sure there's possibly make some kind of a park area, definitely access to the waterfront.
Yeah.
I think is very important, um. Yeah, so we'll, yeah, we'll see how, how that's gonna play out, but it's, it, you know, it's been hard, you know, one, one developer.
Yeah.
Down, the next one down, and the last one, we almost seem to have something going.
Seemed like we were.
Just about there.
Almost there and then, yeah, well, and that's, I guess that's maybe validation that we have some interesting challenges, right?
Yeah, we do have some interesting challenges and, and I think what you need to really, uh, kind of stay. Um, stay focused also on what is coming as far as advances in science, technology. Uh, especially materials that, that may somehow, uh, be a game changer for, for areas like the.
Right, right.
Um, Lake Point.
You bet.
Um, because there are a lot of very, very interesting things, things that are happening, happening, happening on the, on the. Um, nanotechnology level, I guess if you will, um.
Like, like filtration type things?
Yeah, filtration, uh, we do have kind of the observable water parking place out there by, by, uh, City Hall, I don't know if you know that or not. You take a cup, pour water out and just.
The permious surfaces there, right.
Yeah, so, and then, um, yeah, doing that and then there's a lot of the maintenance, uh, that's being planned as far as. Uh, I forgot what it's called, but, but reconditioning the, uh, surface of the, of the roadways. And to, uh, extend the road life and the need for repairs to really, uh, limit those.
Right.
Future, so, but, um, a lot of exciting things that are happening.
You bet.
And, and I think we need to not allow ourselves to be pushed because, um, we will be pushed. And we need to stop and we really need to assess, you know, what is the right direction to go. Um, and we need to use everything in our power to, you know, to hold off on. Demands that may be made, you know, at a higher level.
Right.
On Kenmore.
Right.
Um, I think that's important. And then, of course, the affordable housing thing, the trailer park communities are really on my mind, my heart, of course we can. You know, limited what we can do, but for a few of the communities, they have like the ten-year, uh, buffer.
Right.
Ten-year notice, I guess, for the trailer, trailer park down there by the, the waterfront and. Then we have the, you know, community, um, large Hispanic community out there in one eighty-second.
Yes.
I think, um, you know, I, I really hope that it, when it, when it does come time, and it will come time because it's prime property. Um, that we will somehow be able to do something novel and, um. That will help that community stay together, whether it's, um, some kind of housing, uh.
Yeah.
You know, building a small housing, um, apartments, condos or whatever, because, you know, they got a nice tight community there with their kids. And it really, uh, it just bothers me to, to think that they could just be booted out, so I think. You know, and city is trying to do as much as it can legally to, to mitigate the, the process when it comes to time.
Right.
Um, for the land to be sold and to help, uh, the community transition in the best way possible. And that's another reason why we need to really, you know, take our. You know, keep our accounts in the black because we need to do some, I think we're, we, we have obligations towards. Uh, certain ass, certain, uh. Uh, what would you say, I don't wanna say class, but, but certain communities.
Certain communities, yeah, that are potentially at risk.
Yeah, that are at risk, that, you know, that are solid, you know, so they're solid people. You know, they're raising their kids, um, you know, and we somehow, I think, need to step in and make any transition. You know, it's, you know, do the best we can, uh, for those people.
Right.
I think that's our job, you know, uh, that is a responsibility we have, so.
Sure.
Again, we, you know, keep an eye on what best practices are, keep an eye on what other communities are doing, I think is, is vital.
Yeah, well, Van, this has been really, really interesting, I, I really appreciate you sharing your time with me today.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Are, are there any other things that you'd like to say to folks before we, before we wrap up?
Um. There is, and it is this, I think the city council's main responsibility is to listen to its citizens. Um, be a voice for its citizens and to stand and protect the community from. All the forces that, that will tend to pull, pull a community apart. Um, so it's important for us to have an ear, it's important for us to speak for the people. And it's important for us to be a, a mitigating voice and. Um, between the people and other aspects of government and society that will, that may not be the best, you know. There, there are. That may not be the best, you know, the, the, there. For every one good way there is to go, there's probably ten bad ways and we just need to be in.
All those, all those forks in the road.
Yeah, a lot of forks in the road.
Yeah.
Um, and people are important. Every person's important. Every person has a right to. You know, a, at least a, uh. Caboose to live in with a, with a kitchen, uh.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, man, I s- I so appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
I really did appreciate that.